...or less would qualify for moderate income. If you're a family of four, perhaps a couple and two children, that $72,080 is what we're talking about as gross income to qualify for moderate income. So this can be, certainly qualifies people that work for the township, people that are police officers, some teachers, emergency personnel, and people that are your neighbors generally, and even know that they qualify for this. And this is not government-assisted Section 8 housing, not that they're precluded from this, but this is not something that is geared toward them. This is something that is geared toward those folks that either are young or not so young, that are interested in having housing that is affordable, and that's what this is all about. So we'll kind of do a quick go-round of COA, as it was, the Council on Affordable Housing. The first round was actually, I think, before COA was invented, was in 1986, there was the first round of affordable housing, and Delran satisfied that affordable obligation easily. In 2003, there was a second round, and COA was fully in existence, and Delran satisfied that obligation. There was a surplus at that time, meaning that we had additional, more units than we needed to have at that time. So some of the newspaper articles that described Delran as bad actors, I believe, were inaccurate because we were compliant with what were the obligations at that time. From 1999 to 2015, there were three attempts to find the third round obligation by the state, and that failed. In 2008, COA revised the third round obligation. The third round was challenged in court and was deemed unconstitutional. In 2015, COA was divested. They took all their money away and left them with absolutely no power. And then the affordable housing issue was taken over by the court system, and up until that point, there was still no number that was our obligation that we would have to meet. Then, in 2015, the courts told the townships, all the towns, that a declaratory judgment action had to be filed in the Supreme Court to approve their revised plan. In July 6th of 2015, we did just that. We filed our plan that we felt was in compliance, and we were assigned a special master, it was Mr. Keaton, who was there to be the intermediary for the courts to us to oversee our plan. As I always describe, government runs at a glacial pace, so things were running very slowly. So in 2007, there were three interveners that joined the case. Not a term that I was familiar with before this, but an intervener is just that, someone that jumps in on the case to stake their claim, to try to help or be involved in that claim. The first of which was Fair Share Housing Center, and then there was a group called Chester Avenue LLC, and then Atlantic Delta LLC. So the three groups that joined in to this lawsuit, this case that we filed to protect the town, Stuart is our attorney, Stuart Platt from Platt Associates. The exact term for what we were filing, was it builder's remedy? Or was it just...
So by us filing in 2015, we got what was called temporary immunity from a builder's remedy suit, where a builder could come in any place where they wanted within the town, regardless of the zone, and try to put as many affordable housing and market ratings as they could. So by doing the filing, as you indicated, Council President, we were protected and proactive in that fashion.
Okay. So we were following it step by step by the book. Now, when they interceded or intervened, there were a couple of things that happened. First, I'm going to talk about the three interveners. First was Fair Share Housing, and Fair Share Housing is a group that, it's a nonprofit that files suits or intervenes in suits all over the state to force towns to create more affordable housing, based on what they feel are the needs of that town. They are not in Delran, they are not in any way involved in the township or its business, they just intervene in these suits. The founder of that organization, this is right off of their website, is a gentleman named Peter J. O'Connor, and he is their founder, and they self-describe themselves as crusaders for the rights of low-income families. But further on their website, it explains that "with not battling in the courtroom, O'Connor is busy developing housing for the poor in South Jersey, where he heads Fair Share Housing Development, which has developed and managed 656 units of affordable housing, including Ethel R. Lawrence Homes." Now, if those folks have any background on COA, it's all kind of based on the Mount Laurel Agreements. That would be Mount Laurel I and Mount Laurel II. And Mount Laurel II was based on the Ethel R. Lawrence Homes. So this organization basically is the one that represented the group that created the affordable housing requirement. Stuart, help me if I'm missing anything?
No, you're doing perfect.
Okay. So this is that organization. They're developers, but they also have their nonprofit side that makes sure that towns develop affordable housing. They're not involved in Delran in that capacity, but they are someone who does sue towns all over the state to do that. When they intervened, they said that they wanted us to create 827 low-to-moderate income housing units. Now, what happens with affordable housing is that any development is typically, in an all-inclusive development, means that only 20% of a development is affordable. The other 80%, which is where the developers frankly make their money, is fair market value housing. So you don't really, you can't really tell from the outside that it's low to moderate income, you may have Formica countertops instead of granite, and it's intended that you don't know, and for good reason, you know, you don't want to point out that that's a lower-income family, or that it's a lower-valued home, so they look the same. But what's important to know is, if you look at these numbers, that 827 at a 20% set-aside, is what they call it, would create 4,135 new homes in Delran. We'll get to what impact that would have in just a second. So the second intervener was a company called Chester Avenue, and they bought a piece of land from Holy Cross High School, and that is the section that is directly across the street, right along Chester Avenue. They came in and wanted 400 homes there. And what happened with our, when this all came about, is that all of these interveners met with myself and all of the attorneys that represent the various boards in town, Mika, who was our planning engineer, she's our planner for the township, Mr. Platt's firm was not engaged with us at the time, but we did have our planning board and our former attorney there, and myself. And it was my job to try to negotiate them down. We took them from 400 units across the street, down to 265 units across the street, which is about 34% or 135 units. This would be 212 fair market units, regularly-priced homes, and 53 affordable units. And you may ask, did you mention that there's a school and that the traffic is nuts? And I can tell you a dozen times. I mentioned to them not only that, I said, "There are two schools right next to where you want to be. There's a fire station, there's an EMT station, the police station, the township, the courts held here, and all those kids in all those schools." And they said, "Fine, we have the rights to the land, thank you very much." So we insisted that, in addition to the obvious in-and-out here, that they create an in-and-out directly on Route 130. It was not, I remind you, no one went out looking for any of these homes. This was because of the intervention into our attempt to protect ourselves, and that that's why these folks came in and wanted to do what they wanted to do. The next intervener was a company called Atlantic Delta. They want to develop the property right next to Home Depot, that's right on Route 130. They wanted to do 240 market value units, and they wanted to do 15% set-aside, which would have meant 36 affordability. Remember, we're trying to get to a number that makes the courts reasonable and happy so that we can settle this with the least number of units possible. And they came in and said, "Well, we'll give you 36 units." And we said, "No, thank you very much. If you're going to do that many houses, we want 48 units at least," and we were able to get that. So the difference being that it was the same total number of units, but we've got 12 additional credits for affordable housing. This is something that is right on Route 130, the only in-and-out is on Route 130. For the folks in Forest Hills, it is all behind the woods, it's not where Home Depot is. Where you can see it, it'll be all nestled with that big buffer behind the woods. And then, they pulled in Delran Land LLC. That is what most of us know as the former Stellwag property. And that property was, we already had an agreement with them to build 82 units. Now, that was, we negotiated for a long, long time, and they were and still are going to be all age-restricted. So those units are 55 and older, regardless of the rumors or what you hear on Facebook, there is no one allowed to live there under 18, so they will have no impact on the schools. Well, they brought them in and said, "There are no units there, so we need them to be involved." So at this point, now, the township already had an agreement with them, and now we were kind of, had the tables turned, and now we needed units from them. So we asked them to build 20 affordable units there. They will be age-restricted as well, so this will continue to have no impact on the schools. And there were some additional fair market units for them, which totaled an increase of 29 total new units to that. It was already scheduled to be 82, so it's now going to be 111. And the reason that, and now that we had a need to help them, they used that opportunity because they had been asking all along for a 25-year pilot payment in lieu of tax, and we said, "Not interested, thanks, go away." Well, now we needed them, so rather than a 25-year pilot, we did work with them for a five-year graduated abatement. I know we're going through a lot of information quickly, but here's what that means. That means we're abating the taxes for five years, but not completely. The beginning of this, first let me say that the land is and will always be taxed. When that land is subdivided, as they start to, once they create all the separate lots, the property will increase in value. We don't know exactly what that'll be, because we don't know their plan yet to do that, but that'll mean that their taxes will go up for the land, and that'll be taxed at 100%. Beyond that, all of the COA units that are there will be taxed at 100% on the first day of their certificate of occupancy. So the land and the COA units are not abated at all. What it'll mean for the fair market value properties is that the first year, all we'll collect from them is the land. We'll get 100% of the land value from them as they become built, so that it's difficult to give you numbers on this, because we don't have a timeline of when they're going to be built and completed. Right now, we're just going to take it as one lump. But what's going to happen is, as they're built and sold, and they get the CO, the certificate of occupancy, that's when the clock starts ticking for that property. So there's going to be, you know, 90-some timelines going on from that. But the first, we're just going to call it the first year of abatement. It'll be zero taxes on the first year and 100% on the land, that'll be on the improvements. Second year, it'll be 20% of the improvements plus all of the land. Third year, 40%. Fourth year, 60%. Fifth year, 80%. And then by the sixth year, it'll be 100% of the property as well as 100% of the land. And again, it will be all age-restricted. They will not, those units, we don't have the exact numbers, because we don't know what they're selling for, we don't know all that, but we estimate the valuation is that will, after the abatement is up, it will be somewhere in the vicinity of a million dollars a year in additional taxes. Again, with no impact to the school. The other site that we own, the township owns this, and we've talked with some affordable housing developers, is a site called abrasive alloys. And what these affordable housing developers will do is put all affordable housing in one unit. It's unusual, it's difficult, I'm not sure exactly how they make their money, but they do, and that'll be 65 units in that site. We have been studying that site for any hazardous material, we've done a number of studies. We're at the point, I think, where we have, we're at the next step, where we'll start abating anything that may be in the soil. And once that's all cleaned up, we will go directly to work with a yet-to-be-determined affordable housing development. So here's where we are. I wanted to get, all those numbers are interesting and crazy, but this is where we are. Right now, Delran has approximately 6,436 homes. And just to recall, they wanted us to put 820 COA units, and then that would be 3,308 fair market value units, for a total of 4,135 units. So as a result of the mediation, this is what it would look like. So the blue line is where we are today. What they wanted was for us to go to the red column and go that much more above that. We'll have a couple more examples of what that would mean, but we're talking about nearly doubling the size of our town. So what we were able to do, again, the suit wanted 827 units, we negotiated it down to 365 affordable units, the market value units would be 495. So we were talking about 860 units total. However, we had a secret weapon in our planner, and that is Mika. Mika was able to work out through, frankly, I'm not sure how she did it, she adjusted the numbers, she found where we had all the additional credits, we could get a second credit for the same unit. So where we ended up being was that the actual number of houses that are going to be built would be 186 COA units and 495 fair market value. And that is 681 units, which is approximately 10% of where we are as a township right now. This also, the 681 units, includes the 82 units that were already approved at Delran Land, which was the Stellwag property. So it turns out that the actual number of units is going to be below 500 units at the end of the day. So the key numbers here are that the negotiation, we were able to reduce the total number of units by 35, 3,454 units. So we went from 4,100 to 681. And while it's 681 more houses than we actually wanted, it's far cry better than what they intervened on the suit asking for. The difference would have been, as I mentioned before, the difference was that it was 6,436, the blue line is where we are today, and the red line is where they wanted it to be, and the green line is where we would end up with this round. The difference is an increase of 64% of new units to an increase of 11%. Those are the actual numbers. And in reality, the number of houses that are being built went from the big red number of 4,135, what they requested, down to 681. You subtract the ones that were already approved on the Stellwag property, it's 599 units. So once again, I'm going to leave this slide up. The next slide is for questions. I know I went through that material pretty quickly, but we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm just going to ask you, this is not going to be like the national politics that goes on. We're all neighbors. I'm going to ask you to, you know, give us the courtesy, and we will absolutely give that to you. And the way this works is that you'll need to be recognized, you'll come forward and speak on the microphone. Everyone that speaks will be asked to have to state their name and address for the record, and speak directly to me. I'm the council president, I'm usually sitting where our engineer is sitting, but unfortunately, with our old technology, this is as far as the court will reach for me to control the computer. So I would ask if someone has a question, just raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you, and if we have a lot of questions, it'll be as it is, and you're the first one, if you come onto the microphone. I would ask that while she's speaking, please give her the same courtesy you've given me, and not interrupt. And I'd ask you to address council as opposed to the folks that are in the audience.
Sure. I'm at Delran at 900 Enger.
Hi, Ethel.
Hi, I have two questions. Juror is former abrasive alloy site. Where is that?
abrasive alloys is back behind the Bridgeboro Fire Station, there's that old factory site.
Okay, gotcha. Next question. Is this going to continue, is this going to continue to happen every so often where the state or whomever will mandate that there are so many additional affordable housing units added to our community?
Well, I can't predict what the state will do, but this will immune us from any round three additions. Will it be a round four? My guess is probably. We are currently looking at some properties to try to acquire some open space, additional open space, you know, what is now the Community Park was slated to be a number of homes, we were able to get that, and we're looking at a couple of other properties in town that we can try to get before they become developed. Ultimately, we can't stop anyone from selling their land to a developer, you know, unless we can intercede and get them first.
Gotcha.
You know, frankly, the Holy Cross, I'm wishing them all the best that they stay open, because they have a very large property that I'd like to see remain as a school. And, you know, these are the things that we try to protect the township from happening. We can't acquire all the land, but there's some folks in town that have big pieces of land that are interested in maybe not seeing it become a bunch of houses, and they've stepped up, and we're speaking with them right now.
Okay. So there are ways to maybe possibly preserve whatever might be left to sit, to tend to?
Yes, yes. Obviously, as with everything, it all comes down to money. Right now, we have an open space tax that has a limited timeline. It goes to 2024, and then it stops. If, you know, if we get to that point and we can acquire more, you know, we may ask the residents to tell us if we can extend that. Ultimately, that's the money that, we leverage that money to get things like Community Park and some other parcels of land in town. Sure, thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir. And your next.
Counselor, my name is John Roffey. I'm in 824 Ward.
Hey, John.
My question is the effect, roughly 286 kids may have a long school district. Judging by the 2010 long-range facility plan that I found, we're already over. That says we have 2,910 capacity in the school district. Enrollment this year was 2,961. If I use the census, and I base this off of, and forgive me if my numbers are a little off, I picked 567 new homes that weren't age-restricted. And there was sort of backed-up in your numbers in this information you guys gave us. At 2.8 kids, I'm sorry, 2.8 people per house based on the census data, it's about 286 kids. Where are we going to go? We don't have a long-range plan that I've seen. I know people are going to ask about traffic in a minute, but I have kids starting in the school district in a year. They're already full, and that's adding a whole other grade to our school district.
Right. So first, the school board is, are the people that are to be planning for that. I mean, we don't have, we have absolutely no authority over the school board. I know that they're aware of what's going on. That is the reason that we insisted on, actually, the last two developments that have come to town without suing us to come to town, were both age-restricted. That was, the word was, if you wanted to come to Delran, you better be age-restricted, because we were very aware of that. Children are not in the school anymore, but we certainly see that and saw that was happening. The school board, as to, they have an unusual job, and they have to educate the children that present themselves at the doorstep. But that is, you know, they just received some additional funding, a whole bunch of additional funding, and, you know, we're trying to be as transparent as we can with them. Certainly, they know all of that's going on here and know what's happening, and anytime they need numbers, we try to provide them for them. But, you know, it could have been a whole lot worse. This was not something that, there was really no winning this argument.
Forgive me there, I understand, this is a constitutional obligation, but it's where we stand, and it needs to be planned.
Yeah, yeah.
So even if it's worst-case scenario, this needs to be done. You mentioned yourself, government moves at glacial speed, but last year, April, give or take, the judge ruled that this had to move forward, and that we had to make our obligations. October, you guys settled with Fair Share.
Right.
And in that time period, some of these developments popped out of nowhere. It doesn't seem like glacial speed. The 55 orders, we, some of us were well-aware of. The Holy Cross development, the Holy Cross development, understandably, because the school closed, that was a bonus. But the Home Depot property, I try to follow as much as I can in town, didn't see anything about it, and abrasive alloys seems like a long shot.
That's got to be, that's, we understand and they understand that that's the one jump. Some of these units, and we didn't get into some of the fine details, some are what they call market to affordable units, meaning they're homes that frankly are currently abandoned, that the township will find a way to buy.
Right. I saw that, yeah. That was great planning, I'm sure, on somebody's end, but you can't base this off on the school board, guys, we need to work together to figure this out.
No, no, we're absolutely willing to do that. They know, you know, we tried to mitigate the loss, so to speak, for the additional homes as best we can, and their job is to get passed on to the school.
Sure. You mentioned that we quickly settled after six months.
Same here, I did.
The suit can probably attest to most of this, but there was actually a lot of strategic planning behind that.
Oh, I can imagine there was.
We actually were one of the last towns.
Something sticks out.
Yeah, so Princeton actually decided, because the person they decided they didn't want to settle, and they went to court, and the judge destroyed that. So we wanted to see how the judge reacted to that, to determine.
I applaud the drive you guys have done, like, doubling the town is one thing, but we're just talking about raising this town 10% before you cut down, that's still a big one.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, and we're not disputing that. What I'm trying to say is that we watched the other towns, we were one of the last towns to settle. So we really took a pulse of what was happening in other towns and used that to our advantage.
Awesome.
Gary, can I address?
Sure.
And, you know, I think that your number of potential schoolchildren is probably not far off, like being on the high side. I just attended a seminar about schoolchildren being produced by these types of units, and there's a lot of discussion. Rutgers just did a study, did a study back in 2006, they updated their study, they're talking about, depending upon if it's one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom units, obviously one-bedroom is a little bit, it's an absorption rate. So if we talked about, you said potentially 286 schoolchildren, a lot of the folks, the people that were on the educational side, they talked about 286 schoolchildren, we go by your number, and I'm going to say that is the number. It's absorption rate over time, that's from K to 12, that includes all school-level children, whether they go to private school or public school. So generally speaking, that number, you have to think about it over time, over all those criteria. Over all those grades. So the likelihood of that number resulting in having to build a new school based upon some of the examples that I saw is probably unlikely.
Okay. If you cut it down by 50, we're still adding grade to our school district, whether it's in one, two, or four. It has to be a common, we're, we're already above our number anymore, it's not going to help things.
And, and you might not, it depends, you know, listen, Delran's a great task, people want to move here, obviously.
Unfortunately, to say that, sir, in my neighborhood, I'm not getting that same sense of that.
Well, the other side of the story is, is that school openings are actually down in a lot of places as well.
And if you look at the census data, it's down as well. I didn't do this half-assed, guys, I'm sorry. I didn't do this, I, I became prepared to do this, but these numbers are based off of census. 2.8 kids per, 2.8 people per house, 567 houses that are not 55 over, just add the 0.8 together. You get way more than 285.
According to the information I've received, it's just, it's a matter of, it's over time and over, over 12.
I understand, but they're still coming and we need to plan for it.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate you. Is a gentleman over here in the back? Oh, yes, yes, John. And then I see two folks here and here. Who? Hello?
My name is Harry Hetzel. I live at 8 River Drive down on the Grand Cope Street. And there are two questions that I have about all this development is this. In my brief agreement, you look, where is the sewage going to once we build all this property? And where is the storm water going to once we build the property? Because as you know where I live, on the Grand Cope Street, that's not a subject for discussing tonight. But I need to know. So, do you have the answers yet?
So, so we're told that the sewer plant could handle the, has the capacity to handle that. The storm water, obviously, those folks are going to have to have, have a real good storm water plan. I'm a little disappointed in one of the folks that started clearing because they created a problem.
Yes.
That was stopped. And I, I don't have an update because unfortunately Jeff is rehabbing his knee right now, he's not here with us today, but he may show up or not, I'm not sure if he's even able to get in with the storm. But, but I, so, so flooding certainly is something that, is something that needs to be addressed. I don't know that, that other than in a localized manner, that the storm water will be relevant to your situation. You know, we all know that the water levels are rising and you're right there with the, with the front row seat to that. But I, I don't think we have a problem. We've been, we've been assured that we have the capacity in the sewer department to handle that. The storm water and the runoff, which is what really becomes the issue, will be, will be something that the planning board will need to, they have to keep a sharp eye on.
I thought maybe three or four years ago, and I might be mistaken, that the sewage point was at capacity.
I don't think.
And had.
There's, there's, right now, it's at capacity, the way it's set up, and you can, I forget what it's called, they can trigger another tank for more capacity. So it's ran right now at capacity for, to keep it, when it runs at capacity, it's more efficient.
Okay.
So that's what they try to do, is keep it at capacity, but really, the capacity can increase.
So they have another tank, they have, they have another tank on site that.
Believe that's what it is, yes.
Might not be being used fully at this point.
Don't quote me on exactly the term.
I won't, but.
But we met with, met with the, CME is our engineer, yeah, our engineer, they were well.
They, they, you know, they see this all the time. This is their job. This is, it's our job to do this, but it's not what we're, we're not professional council people, as you know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a gentleman in the back and.
Me?
Yeah, me. Do you want, yeah, yeah, so, sorry, Pat, it was not you.
No.
You're like third or fourth in line. So we'll have the gentleman in the back and then Amy come up.
Hey, Dylan. My name's, is this my?
Yeah, so that, that microphone is not for amplification, it's just for recording. So use your outdoor voice.
So, I'm Nick Zussman, I live at 806 Fifth Street. I was just wondering, my one concern with my mom being a school bus driver in this town since I was like five, what are we going to do on Chester Avenue? Not only in the morning, is there any way we could do something in the afternoon when the schoolchildren are released? Because as it is, the way it is right now, with all the different parents picking their kids up and trying to have, we all see 13, 14 different school buses trying to pull out on Chester Avenue at the same time with the already flow of traffic coming up and down the street with the addition of all these houses right there. Is there anything that we could do, maybe have like a temporary, just to escort the buses out and then, you know, regain flow of traffic or anything like that? Because like, my mom always tells me that the longer they wait at middle school, being the first school that lets out, that ripple effect ripples all the way down to Millbridge at the end of the day. And then that could, that could ripple off to if dad works first shift, mom works second shift, there's not always a babysitter or a, or a grandparent or a sister, brother, whoever, that can pick these children up. And that even ripples even further where, you know, you get to a bus stop, especially with the younger kids, you can't drop the kids off unless there's someone there. And with the additional flow of traffic, if the parents used to being there at a Millbridge stop at 3:56 every day, when you let three buses wait two extra minutes, that ripples down to about 15 different stops that have to wait 15, 20 minutes later, if not completely redo the entire run. So, I don't know if there's any way we can, like I said, like maybe have like one of the officers, because like I said, simple, temporary, like five minutes just to let all the school buses come out and then, you know, let the traffic come back or.
Right, so that's certainly, that's certainly something that we'll have to, the school's going to need to come to us, let us know that they're having this problem. We'll talk with, the police department is certainly ready and able to make any adjustments they have to make. You know, part of what we discussed was to make sure that there is, specifically for the Chester Avenue site, was that it had to be, they had to have access to in and out. My guess is, and this is, this is not something that's, you know, a law, but if, if it takes me 20 minutes to get it out of my development, but I can go up to the highway and it takes me 30 seconds, I went up to the highway. That happens a lot in a lot of different areas that they just go to the highway because it can handle the, as a bigger capacity. It's, it's something that as this starts to happen and we find these, we're going to have to address. I mean, there's, there's, there's no way to anticipate everything, but fortunately, we have a fully capable police department and we'll do what we have to do to mitigate. Well, I know, my children were in the middle school, it was, you know, God forbid on the back-to-school night, we were on Kingsville Road backed up to the jughead for Chester Avenue. So, I get it.
And the one thing that worries me about it, like when I used, when I attended middle school, you know, the half-days, you know, not so much anymore, but you know, 10, 15 years ago, half the school walks up to Route 130. So it's, you know, on top of the traffic and the school buses, now you have, you know, a bunch of pretty young adolescent teenagers that you're trying to tell them to walk down the street. We all know when this, that's not happening, you know?
I understand.
And then, I just had one quick second question, I guess quicker to ask, is there any idea what this will do to all of our property tax with more of these houses?
The, the impact on your taxes, our taxes, I mean, I, I don't know down the line, I know what, what will happen, is that it will, there's, there's two sides to this story. It will generate more taxes, there's no question. It will also generate the need for more services, more trash removal, more police protection, more roads will have to be cleared once these eventually become township roads. So there'll be more work to do, there'll be more people to share the tax burden with that. So it remains to be seen. Some people think that more houses are better, more industry is better. Frankly, you know, with, with the whole Ed Shopping Center and, and anything new that's industry, that's good because they don't have children in the school, they don't, they take care of their own trash and recycling, they typically plow their own lots, and there's typically less need for police at those properties. So, so there are, there are bones. You know, we're, we're running out of space to develop new industrial areas. I mean, Schuster just did the big expansion, as everyone from this side of the highway knows. So it, it's, it's a balance that has to happen. Exactly what the impact is going to be, I, I can't guess on that. Okay? I appreciate you. Great question.
Hi, I'm Amy Rafanello. I'm here as a parent and a taxpayer. I'm also on the school board. Our entire Delran Board of Education would be here tonight, but we have our own school board meeting, so they asked me to come in order to get the information too, to relay back to them. My question is this, with the 599 units, I'm not including Stellwag's because that's age-restricted, and again, I appreciate the complexity of this, I appreciate all the effort that you put into this, but there will be an impact to the schools. We have had our own demographic study done. We have had a hard time getting information from the township, or I'm sure it's because this has been pending litigation. But I hope that going forward, our demographers, maybe I can, you guys can give me a name of who they can contact in order to get the information, in order to plan. But there will be an impact to the schools. Our demographers have already said that, they've been doing a five-year plan and a 10-year plan, just to try to cut this off and figure out everything out. So my question to you is this, can there be discussions with developers that want to come in about funding additions to the schools in order to develop on the land? And also, can there be sidewalks included in any developments? Because that's kind of a no-brainer, just with all the kids that walk down the street that will be coming from these developments.
So the first question, I'm going to defer to our attorney. The second question is, is something that typically is discussed in planning. I'm the representative of council to planning, and, and that's typically something that we try to include in there.
Okay. I hope we really try to include it.
There's a final question. Yeah, yeah. As, as, as Amy, as you know, we've been, we've been working with grants to try to get all of Route 130, have sidewalks, you know, we.
And I know with 7-Eleven being built, the sidewalks were included in that, so we really appreciate that.
So.
We just want to make sure that it's known that the school board really would like sidewalks for the safety of the kids that are walking down there.
Stuart, as far as the other question?
Yeah, and directly paying for impacts from a development, the school impacts, police and fire impacts. The answer to that question is generally those impacts are paid through the taxes that are generated through developments themselves. So I think it would be inappropriate, we just did not allow, like some states do, to allow, to negotiate directly with the developer to say that you have to pay this for your school impact, or say they pay for their tax payments like everybody else does. Sometimes with the pilot payments, you can get some additional monies into these different types of redevelopment projects. Generally, the answer is you can't negotiate a direct payment from the developer because potentially those homeowners are going to be living there, the renters renting there, and their taxes are paid like anybody else is taxable in those taxes. Of course, we vote for it to the municipality, the schools, the counties, and so on and so on those things. And that's how those, the impacts will be paid for, and reimbursed by the regular taxpayer.
Okay. So with that, and I know you can't answer this now, but with, there definitely being an impact with the schools, the schools are already at capacity. So the question will be, who is going to pay for the additions to the schools? And it's probably going to be the taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay. Where were we? Who did I, where were we? I, I had, sir, so.
I thought he's been raising.
What is it?
He's been raising his hand.
Okay.
Hi, Jeff Bonner, 116 Kathleen. Take a pretty good meeting tonight, that time.
Thank you.
It was civilized. I guess a couple of things. One, the gentleman that spoke before about the, the children in the school, and also the woman that was just here saying about the impact on the schools. I hope everybody's considering also the, I guess it's, if Holy Cross is going to go away, the kids that go to Holy Cross are going to have to go someplace, which is going to end up being probably a good push on into the development of schools. Just the point that I made was going to be for discussion. What I want to know is just, just, I don't care about whether it's affordable housing or anything like that, I've been guessing you guys about that stuff for a while. But the thing that gets me is, what do you have in place, or do you have anything in place now that stops people from building? Okay, I gotta tell you, we're talking about like the town being built up in some, it's about 20 years ago, I thought the town was built, built, I thought we were done building. And we just keep on building, sort of keep finding places. So this, I guess there's two parts to my, to my comment and question. One is, what do you, what do you have in place to stop this from, from stopping the building going ahead? I know, to me, you could go ahead to the master plan and say everything, everything's commercial. So you zone everything commercial, which pretty much stops anyone from building. But, but the other part of that, which is, I guess it's related, is if you look at it, I got to ask, like, how did these different areas get approved for residential? With Stellwag, I would imagine is probably, probably agricultural, I don't know what the zone was, but somebody had to say, yep, yeah, you can make that residential, yes, you could build units. Prior to that, they wouldn't be able to build units. Somebody had to say, yes, you can do that. And I guess these other developments are probably similar, so, can you explain?
So they, they, they can, I'm, some of this I'm going to defer to our attorney again because there's some legal issues, I don't think we can, they want to join in on the, on the, some of the units. So as long as the, the homes comply with the zoning ordinances, it, it would be a matter of what's being built and what's coming in. Specific to Stellwag, we, we wanted to make sure it was age-restricted, and because of that, we deemed that an area of redevelopment, and that was something that we worked with them so that they would, we just tried to cram as many family homes in there as they possibly can with, with who knows how many children. So, that was our goal, was to try to keep as many children out of the school from that development specifically. As far as stopping the building and zoning it all commercial, I'm going to hand that over to Stuart, I think, because I don't know that any of that's legal, is it?
Well, I, I think it's, I think that both of you, both council presidents, you have it right. So one of the ways in which a town addresses growth or building, especially residential, is that you look at your master plan and you enact and implement zoning ordinances that say, we're going to put affordable housing aside for a second for, for this discussion, that we want to have less housing, so we're going to zone things for non-residential. Or where there is residential, it's going to be low-density, it's going to be larger lot sizes. So these are all techniques that have been employed already and continue to be employed. It's a vision of what people want for the particular community. So the thing that the council president mentioned is, one of the ways is to use the open space tax to acquire properties that will be permanently preserved, preserved in perpetuity, but you have to have a willing buyer and a willing seller. So those are, that's another way to control growth, but primarily is what you said, is using your zoning ordinances as a method to limit or reduce the amount of residential growth in particular, because that's always been an issue with the impact of schools and the impact of services.
That's the one.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I think I made a comment earlier on the Community Park, the new park that sits out there. Well, Farnford.
I gotta say, I remember that property. That, that property back there was, I believe it was wetlands, so you really couldn't build anything on it. So, I'm saying that you put the park there, that did, that does sort of nothing for the, for the building of, of houses and units and this and that. It was, it's, it's like an area that nobody wanted anyway.
Well, I, I have, I was in the meeting where we were, we were talking about someone who had a plan for, I want to say 180 or 118, it was many years ago, units to be built there, that, believe me, builders can find a way to get.
Well, yeah, they may have wanted it, right, but being wetland.
But, but it's not all wetland, because we wouldn't be able to be there if it was all wetland. There's enough wetlands and enough drylands or whatever, Mika, you can help me with the terminology, but they, they can cluster homes, they'll still have some open space, it'll be private property, but it doesn't mean that they won't get those homes in there one way or the other.
Let's go back to the Stellwag.
That, believe me, builders can find a way to get.
Well, yeah, they may have wanted it, right, but being wetland.
But it's not all wetland, because we wouldn't be able to be there if it was all wetland. There's enough wetlands and enough drylands or whatever. Mika, you can help me with the terminology. But they can cluster homes, they'll still have some open space, it'll be private property. But it doesn't mean that they won't get those homes in there one way or the other.
Let's go back to the Stellwag property. So when you're saying about, okay, it's good that it's age restricted, so it keeps the kids out of school, less taxes and so on. That's absolutely good. But my way of thinking is, if it was agricultural before, forget about making it residential and allowing the over 55 people to be there. You could take those units and put them into another residential area where you would have had kids going to school, instead of using that Stellwag property. Back to, I guess, the Stellwag property again, who ends up approving or who approved it to have these units there?
Well, first of all, let me say this. First of all, the property was sold to a developer. So it's not something, we don't own it, the township doesn't own it, and you can say, the misnomer is that everybody thinks that we go, let's put some houses there. It's never that. It's always private property, sold to private property. So, again, our attempt to keep that age restricted with the least impact to the schools was to say, this has been sold to a developer. We either have a seat at the table and we can kind of steer it to be age restricted, or we don't have a seat at the table and we let them come in with their plan and hope like the devil that the planning board can reduce it as much as they can. We have, the planning board, however, has no ability to say, like, if they're sitting in a council meeting, we can say, boy, we just don't like that. Let's find another way to do that. The planning board, if there's a plan that falls within the guidelines of the ordinances, they have to approve it. We can't stop that.
So did the Stellwag property, did it fall in guidelines that you could put residential units in the agricultural area without the zoning ordinance being ensured?
For Stellwag, what the council president is saying is, we got a seat at the table as to, we prepared something called the redevelopment plan, where we negotiated as to what would be the best plan for that property. And we decided on how many units can happen there, or, you know, negotiated with them and let use best practices methods to work the plan on how they develop the entire property.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to stick on this just for a little longer. The Stellwag property was agricultural. When it was agricultural, at that point, because it's agricultural, are you able to build residential units on the property?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember the zoning, that's the one. But I think it is at, you know, residential, so.
Good point, too, right?
That's right.
The property itself, it is, it was used as a farm, but it does have, the way the zoning is, it does have suitable rights. And the use was.
Okay, I'll play what you said.
Maybe.
Maybe. Oh, so, wait, okay, for the, like, what was the future?
This close.
Okay, yeah, we were very close. Earlier, you said, the gentleman, that you didn't have any idea what the effectiveness would be. I find that.
On the school?
Or on the taxes, the taxes for these additional units. I mean, finance is my background, so I just kind of think numbers all the time. With this kind of stuff, I would have known that, okay, I would have done some estimating and said, hey, for the houses that I'm going to build, so many houses, I know the expenses that I'm expecting to have less the tax revenue that I'm going to get is going to be up or down, and the taxes to the town is going to go up or down by so much. I would kind of just know that. I'm surprised that you're not able to tell anybody.
So here's what, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Jeff. So here's what happens. We're not building any. So we don't know what the price point is on these homes, what the tax revenue is on these homes, what the cost will be on these homes. I mean, children will be on the homes. I know we have some estimates, and that's probably accurate, because the gentleman seemed like he did his homework. But it's not like we're driving the ship on this stuff. This is, what our responsibility was, was to, in our mind and in my mind, was to get the lowest possible number of new homes and as many age-restricted as we could. We, you know, there's a, there's this, anybody can sue anybody for anything. And even as we, Stuart, I'm going to ask you to, you know, even if, even if we said, no, you couldn't build anything, or you could build certain amount of homes on the, what is now Delran land, was the Stellwag property, I don't think it's too far fetched to say that they could probably sue to try to get more density than this. From my understanding, that happens regularly.
That's exactly right. And so I think that bringing this to a conclusion, the whole purpose, the theme of tonight is what could have been disaster averted, quite frankly, versus what is possibly, if we're planning, it's being planned for, whether they come in or not, we don't know. Certainly, to have litigated this case, the town that did litigate this case spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees. Everybody hates planning lawyers, you have many planners and so on. And didn't get much of a difference at the end of the day. So in reality, we don't know, but we do know that with these units, we will be generating millions of dollars in new tax revenues. We know that for a fact, okay? We don't know how much, because we don't know, the assessment hasn't assessed it yet. So there's going to be new tax revenues. We know that. There's not, there's no argument to that. How much? Unfortunately, when it comes to affordable housing, one of the many factors, this whole complicated, which is why it's a problem, is because the state and the Supreme Court and the affordable housing advocates do not allow us to factor in whether or not we're going to come out in the black on taxes. In other words, the revenues that are generated will exceed the services. That is not a fact that can be taken into consideration. So all a town can do, and what Delran did a very good job, is to reduce and mitigate the impact that this could have on the township as a whole. What will be, will be, but there will be new tax revenues, there's no question about that.
And again, I think you did a nice job and everything with this. The reason I'm going this way with this, with this master plan and with the zoning and so on is because it's back to what I originally said, is what is your plan for the future? What are you going to do to stop this from happening in the future? My idea is to go to the master plan and start looking at the areas that you do have available and change it. Even though, even though there could be, there could be residential area now, you could change it to commercial for the whole area. That would just stop people from doing anything new in the area. I mean, it's just, it's a concept, it's an idea, it's a way for you to steer the ship, if you will. That's all.
Thank you, Jeff. See you.
How about Ms. 21 Alvin, um, question. I understand and I agree, you know, somebody owns land, they have the right to do whatever they want. If they want to sell it, we can't stop them. However, what was the land at Holy Cross zoned for?
What was the, there are a, I don't have the.
I mean, because everything around there is more or less commercial and industrial. So I kind of have a hard time believing it was residential.
The zoning map is in there, I think, if not, that's more of a. Do you have that time to pull that up, Tyler, if you would, let me just take a look at that. It was buildable.
Oh, sure, it's buildable, but what is another student, another question?
Right, so.
And if it wasn't residential, when did that get changed? And who approved that?
Jeff, not that one.
Very good.
That's a good question. You know, I'm sure that we, when that was sold, and they came to us with that plan, we had no choice but to negotiate with the municipal leaders and that.
And then my other question regarding that is, let's say it is zoned residential, and I don't know all the ins and outs of zoning. Is there a difference between single-family homes and an apartment building?
Yes.
So then it had to have been zoned for an apartment building, since these are all going to be rental units. Why couldn't it have been if it's zoned residential, single-family homes, reducing the number of homes that would have been there?
Mika, do you have?
It's zoned for office.
Right.
Yeah.
But they're able to build all that way.
But it's zoned for office, how do you get to build 200-plus apartments?
Because they were wanting to be in the U.S. for our constitutional obligation. Delran is required to meet this obligation. They were wanting to meet it. So they basically came with their piece of property and they said, we can build. So we can help you meet your obligation, which is what Delran obligation was. Now, of what the council president is saying, they came up with 400 units of this property.
Who is that?
The Chester Avenue, Alex. That's the company, I guess, that bought the property, or is in negotiation of buying the property. And they're the ones heading to me and said, we can build 400 units of this property. And that's when Delran, the council president, negotiated that down, that, yes, we can build, but not as much as home.
But the zoning was changed, so they could build.
No, see, let me just explain to you.
Please.
The whole affordable housing.
I'm not concerned about the affordable housing, in the moment, that's it.
Yeah, let me finish. The whole affordable housing element, all the towns and cities, that it has, it breaks through whatever your zoning is. So this town could have been zoned completely office and commercial, and it would not have mattered, because affordable housing developers either would have followed builders' rounded suits or intervened as they had, because you can't zone out. That's the whole idea of the whole Mount Laurel constitutional obligation is, you can't zone to exclude homes and housing for people of low and moderate incomes. So it breaks through zoning, it doesn't matter what the underlying zoning was. Nobody changed it to anything to allow this to happen. It was done by, essentially by legal force of the affordable housing obligation through Mount Laurel. And the incriminers came in and they said, we don't care that it's zoned office, we don't care that it's zoned commercial, we don't care that it's agricultural, we don't care that it's zoned for nothing, if that research is great. We want to build 400 homes here, and we can do it right here. We can satisfy, we can help satisfy the towns' affordable housing obligation. And through negotiations, that came down. So it's not about what's zoned, you cannot ultimately fully control affordable housing through zoning. That's the whole idea of Mount Laurel. Mount Laurel, back in the 70s, they had 10-acre lots, so that you couldn't get apartments into that town. And the court said, no, you can't exclude people by land use, master plan, zoning penalty. So affordable housing punches through existing zoning and allows for these developers, who claim they're affordable housing advocates, to get their affordable housing. So what our task was, and what council did, was reduce it and mitigate it as much as they could in light of the legal precedent that was involved. So zoning doesn't matter when it comes to affordable housing.
Okay. So one thing I'm not clear on is the number for the, for the affordable housing. Are we assigned a number right now, like, we need to have X? And in order to get, need them, we need to then develop?
So years ago, hold up, Jeff, I'm reading about this. So years ago, when affordable housing, the first two rounds, remember the council president put up the two rounds, COA would assign each town a number.
Based on?
Based upon a lot of factors, population, demographics, labor statistics, income, all kinds of things. There's 40 or 50 elements that go into it. COA would assign a town a number in the first two rounds. You file a plan, COA will approve it, you're good to go. COA, in 1999, had an obligation to build in a third-round methodology. They tried three times, it all failed. In other words, until 2015, those 16 years intervened, and there was no third-round number. So nobody was really doing anything, other than Fairshire Housing was going to court. Every time COA would throw something up, they'd say, it's not enough unconstitutional, not enough unconstitutional, unconstitutional. Finally, the court said in 2015, we're going to let it go back to the courts. COA's out, and the municipal side and the, and the Fairshire Housing, affordable housing advocates, go get your own experts. So they got, Fairshire Housing got a professor Kinsey. He came up with this gigantic model, he had some mysterious lab someplace, with literally dozens and dozens of factors, based upon jobs, his labor statistics, all this. Came up with these numbers, these gigantic numbers for state, gigantic number for the housing region under five, and then ultimately each municipal share. And that number was at 827. The municipalities had their own experts, who they came up with much lower numbers. And parties negotiated. Delran did something very smart. They waited until the one community up in Mercer County, they fought it. The judges came out with these other numbers. And as a result of that, we rated, and we were able to get a lower number. And we would have gone to Spottown, the seventh before that case, got much higher numbers. So Delran was in a good position, we waited, took a chance, but it worked out. You see, the number went from 827 down to 365. So you're talking about, whatever your normal convention is of what zoning is, a master plan is down, affordable housing, and Mount Laurel, Doc, puts it on a whole other level, and it's so complicated, most attorneys and most planners don't even know how to explain it. And I'm, you know, I've been doing it for many, many years, and I do my best to try to explain it. And there's so many ins and outs of it, no one will ever know all of it. But we try to do as much as we can, and we're trying to give the public and our clients as much information as we can to make it. I hope that answers your question.
It does, you were very clear, so thank you very much. That's appreciated. So 365 is the number that we will have once all this development is completed.
That's not new units, though, that's just the number.
That's the unit. Affordable units of that, because of the way that Mika was able to work this out, the number of affordable units that will be built will be 186.
Okay, so then those other units that you get bonus points, brings this up to that.
You know, a rental.
Gotcha, I understand.
You get bonus credits, so you might, if you have rentals, there's bonuses for bearers, yeah.
We have rentals, we have group homes.
Right. How many affordable housing units do we have right now before this development? I'm sorry?
You mean the existing, currently? There are the two, including Somerville and Garden Club, they come up to around 150. And we have about, I would say around 30, I mean, 47 credits for the group homes that are existing. And that's about it.
So my other, all these others are privately owned land, and as I said, I understand that. We own, the township already owns abrasive alloy. I would think that since we already own them, it would be better for us to claim that as open space. It backs up to the open space from Anderson's Farm. It's beautiful once it's cleaned. If you walk back here, you can walk right out to the creek, families could fish, have picnics. It would be a beautiful spot in town, because there's not much of that left for us anymore. We need, you know, someone had said about quality of life, the quality of life in Delran is not rising. Okay, as a builder, we get complaints all the time, moving, the taxes are going through the roof, the traffic is horrendous. That traffic's just going to get worse. I mean, I come up Chester, and in the morning sometimes it's three or four light. What's it going to do when you have another 200 homes? As well as everywhere else, you know? I just don't understand how that could be. And abrasive alloy, that's a one-lane road going back there. And most of the homes are right on the street. How you're going to widen those streets in order to build roads is beyond me. You're going to have to buy people's properties in order to widen streets.
So just the one, the one thing that I'd like to comment on abrasive alloys, is that we needed to get two with 365. So if we factored in abrasive alloys as all affordable, because if not, at 65, and you saw with the numbers that were going up, with 20 here and 40 there, that saved us from having to get two more developments that were all-inclusive, meaning 20% or 18% set aside. So we said, is there anywhere that we, that we can do more of a, a higher impact of affordable, or 100% affordable? And we found that we could determine that this location of the locations that were available would be the better of the location. would be the better of the location. Nothing is what, again, we'll say it again, because we didn't go looking for all these houses, affordable or otherwise. We had to make a number, because we had, we had a gun to work. This was a lawsuit. And as, as our attorney just stated, and I'm sure Jeff heard this as well, that when you're in these suits, the zoning laws, they can break through them. So, so this is not a case where we had some protection. When the judge is up there, if we don't settle this some way that's reasonable to both parties, they can say whatever they want. This is not, "Oh, you know, I know that you have some traffic problems." They don't care. Not that they don't care about people, but their job is to find the number and settle the case and move on to the next. And Fairshire Housing is, their job is to get as many numbers and as high a numbers as they could, and our job was to get the least amount of numbers as we could. And we had to negotiate in the middle, took as hard a stance as I've ever taken in any negotiation. I'm in the business for a long time, and some we won real big and some we didn't win so good. But we got to the number that was acceptable to all the parties. Remember that. We were negotiating, and we had four parties implied here. Jeff was there at almost all of them, and Mika was there at them, and, and this was, this was a four-sided negotiation that, that we were dealing with. And, and there were no rules. The special master was sitting right across from me the whole time, staring at me, wondering what I was going to say to try to adjust these numbers. And we, we found a number that worked, that everybody found, not palatable, but acceptable. This is not, we didn't, we didn't go out looking for one home. So, so we said, "Well, let's get the best deal that we could possibly get, and, and deal with it as we go forward." So, I hope that answered your question, maybe?
Well, it did, but, you know, I still think that, who owns the property of where Lake Lani is on Leon Avenue?
That's township. Township owns that property.
Okay, so why don't you develop that, and reduce the traffic, and not have, you know, destroy nature and everything else? Why wouldn't you put those sixty-five units over there?
Yeah. Tyler?
So, as Gary mentioned, this is a constitutional obligation, right? So, we have to figure out where to put these homes.
Right.
All right, so did we have to give up some of our land? Absolutely. I would love to do what you said. I think we've talked about, I don't think it was on anyone's radar to have that developed. So, we sort of had to give that up, frankly. Absolutely. But part of, litigation's over, so we can say that. The affordable, that property is, Jeff, how long?
Three acres.
So, if you can.
This is, this is.
That is three acres.
Abrasive alloys.
Abrasive alloys, I'm talking about abrasive alloys.
Okay, yeah, no, I know that's not green.
Yeah, that property probably has four years at least ahead of it for the rest of the studies that need to go to mitigation, and then to come back and re-study it. So, the truth is, we probably won with that chip, because that's not going to be developed for at least a couple of years. You know, compared to Stellwagen, which is, they're developing.
Oh, sure.
So, that was one of the, part of the strategies, too. I, I think all of us agree, who would love for that to be a development spot. What Gary's trying to say is that we had to give up some of our land to meet that obligation, or the judge is going to say, "You didn't meet your constitutional obligation, find somewhere to put a thousand homes." So, I, I echo your safety concerns.
And if I can add, Gary, that with abrasive alloy being a hundred percent project, as you alluded to, most inclusion, for every affordable, there's going to be four market rates. So, instead of having three hundred and twenty-five units there, through the negotiations, they save two hundred and sixty market rate units. So, they only have a hundred percent, they only have sixty-five instead of three hundred and twenty-five. So, a hundred percent projects are actually ultimately enviable if you want to reduce the number of units. That is a good product. And those projects, if you pick the right affordable housing developer, they know how to maintain, they have to get investment tax carries, they have to get proof from the state through the H M F A funding. Those projects have to be well maintained and well kept, because they're bank financed, and most of them stay with the project, which are deemed restricted for thirty years. So, these hundred percent projects are actually good projects to have, reduces them, gives them a big, well kept and well maintained, by experience.
And abrasive will be single family house? It's a sixty-five units, it doesn't actually, so assuming, single?
These might be townhomes or apartments. The size of the property and the number of units they have to get, singularity might help it, more fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
My name is PJ Buzzing, and 4205 Bridgefront Road, and I'm vice president of the Civil Society. And my question was basically with the Delran land investment, Stellwagen's property. I'm concerned that when Delran land investment, the company, and when they actually open up Harper Road and put all the pipes in, are they going to properly repair Harper Road, especially since we just developed it? And I do know you guys do good, P S E and G, what a company, trying to get them to repair the roads. And, you know, I was very happy to see you guys get all the funding and the grants from the state to fix the road. But I would hope Delran would follow the Burlington County's lead and make developers repair, you know, take up the top layer and the base layer of the roads, and make them redo the whole thing, like they did on Creek Road. Sounds like you sent her meeting here.
Yes, exactly what we said. So, so, that's a, that's a point, and Stuart, help me if I, you know, we're, we're now, Stuart is in negotiations with that developer, and saying that, you know, we don't want patches there. They need to get two taps, learning some of that line of lingo, they need to be, it's some sort of a flow-through process, or whatever reason, and we said, "Oh, well, good, you should have put the tap in before we did the road." We feel that everybody was noticed, and that if you're going to disturb the road, then we need curb-to-curb, and we don't want, we don't want to, you know, that's maybe a fifty-foot patch where people can't see where one end is from the other, or wherever is disturbed. But we're still in negotiation with that, so there's been a lot of options. We do have a moratorium on opening that road, and, and we haven't indicated that we would, we would be interested in having that road open, unless there was something that was acceptable to council. So, it's, you bring up a great point, but it's certainly something that we've talked about. Stuart, could you say ad nauseam?
Yeah, I think you're, that's a perfect word. Council is not certain to release the moratorium. They want any kind of combination, it's going to be, have to be fairly extensive. I wouldn't call it a new patch, it would have to be extensive. I don't want to go into details, because there's negotiations going on right now, but right now, they have to follow.
Good, yeah. And the only other question I had, is with new developments, could, since we have a green team, could we have them, like, plant more trees, like, along the streets? And like, maybe in the yards, just to make it look better, like, if you're in Morris Town, and they build new developments, like the one on Harper, they had trees lining the roads, and then, when they get bigger, then you don't see the houses as much, and it improves the roads, protects them, stuff like that. So, I was just curious if there's any, sure, thing we could do.
So, there, there is a landscaping plan that's submitted to planning board, and developments happen, they have to adhere to that, and typically, their landscaping person talks with the planning board planner or engineer, and they work out something that is acceptable, based upon the origins of place. But, you know, one of the takeaways for me for this is that we're coming, we're about coming up to time to review the master plan. Now, as an explanation, that's not done in its entirety. The master plan is probably six feet tall, and it's, it's done in sections. So, we'll, we'll typically put together a special group that has representatives for planning and zoning, and council, and engineers, and our planner, and revisit that. But council will kind of give them initial direction to do that. What I'm, what I'm hearing, maybe, is that we need to see if we can do that, remembering, Stuart said that no matter how tough your zoning laws are, that lawsuits can punch through them. So, we'll do our best to tighten them up even more, and adding more, more greenery. Sounds like a good plan. I've already made that note. No, thanks, PJ. All right, thank you, thank you. Yes, I have one in the back, and then you're next.
Hi, I'm Beth Thompson, more house to see.
Beth, you're going to have to speak up.
I'll be my outside voice.
Your outside voice.
Where's my outside voice?
You're listening carefully.
On the alloy side, because Delran owns that property, and now you've sold it to a developer, do you have any control over keeping some of the access to trails back there? I know that growing is in county group homes, you know, the whole thing of open space tax was to somehow have as much continued, continuous passive trails along the Redcoast. Will this development destroy that possibility down there? Will people still be able to go down there and walk the trails, or? Because I'm not sure of the size of the property, or, you know, it's like unclear.
Yeah.
You have an influence now, because you own the property, you gave it to the developer.
Right. We didn't give it to anybody, yourself, anybody, yet. They're to be determined. We're still in the process of, of the studies that go on with that. There are, there are just endless studies.
Right.
When there's the possibility of contamination. So, we've, I don't know, Jeff, how many, how many studies?
We've done two full environment studies, and we're in the midst of beginning a third at this point, to identify all the materials and cost of the movement.
Yeah, and I just, I mean, as, as part of that, keeping Delran a nice place to be, having some kind of space, it still is passive recreation back there, some kind of access to that, because building happens. It's really important.
I'm looking at a block, because Mika is prepared for everything. And I don't know exactly where the impact might be on that. You know, we've obviously had some conversations with the county as far as, as the big Anderson Farm property, and what their, what their next steps will be with that. I don't see that, Jeff, is this, it may be contiguous to the open space behind it, but the abrasive alloy, is that in direct contact with?
It's not.
The trail area that they're talking about?
No, I mean, they haven't expressed any interest in that property, because they've acquired some of the properties.
Okay. So, my name would be?
They haven't expressed an interest in that property.
Yeah, and, and we don't have any intention of, in any way, keeping the trails. Matter of fact, we're working with them right now. They're putting the trail into Atticville Island. Those folks don't know Atticville Island, right next to, coincidentally, next to the sewer plant, but it's a beautiful little island. It's actually a peninsula, but they'll be part of that trail. We'll go there, we're planning to pave that street, and we're waiting for them to do what they're going to do, and we've worked it out, so that we're not paving, and they're opening up to repave it. We're going to let them do their work first. So, thanks very much.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Jen Patriarca. I live on Harper Boulevard, so the woods next to Home Depot, that's what my backyard backs up to. So, right now, we have woods back there, and we avoided having a Lidl built there, if anybody remembers that, the supermarket that wanted to be built by Walgreens.
Right, right.
So, I just have some questions about that. That's the Atlanta Delta Development. Do you have a timeline on that development, next to Home Depot?
They haven't, they haven't put a plan forward yet to the planning board, so.
Okay.
So, no.
Okay, so, would it be the planning board meetings that we would attend to find out more about that?
Yes.
Okay. Because I have questions about the, it was noted in the notes here that the woods are a buffer. Those woods are very sparse, especially for seven months out of the year, when there's not a lot of greenery. So, we were wondering about buffering. There's already a lot of noise from Route 130, and so to add more traffic and more noise and construction, I have questions about that.
So, it, so as you know, it's all, it's all in that lot, that there, there is woods there. When they come to the planning, we typically will discuss buffering and noise buffering, and as many trees that we can get in there, maybe that are, that are seasonal trees that are there to create a buffer.
Okay.
And we, we talked about, you know, where it was. We don't have a plan yet, we're not in that, but in the negotiations, we said, "No, no, that one, that one's too close, and we need to pull them as, as far forward as we can."
That's the big concern. Speaking with a lot of residents who live down in Forest Hill, we'll go back right up to the Home Depot. The amount of noise coming from Home Depot for trash removal, deliveries, is very offensive. And it's really not a nice place to live, if you're dealing with that kind of noise. And that's our biggest concern. We want to make sure that our interests are being looked out for throughout this whole process, because there's an entire community back there, and we are very concerned about that.
Sure, and I, there's some folks in back that are, that are there. I have, I, you know, full transparency, I have some friends that moved in last year, and were nice enough to text me every morning that there were trucks idling behind Home Depot.
It's true.
At about four fifteen in the morning. And we had some very nice early conversations, and we did reach out to the manager, and I haven't had a text in a while.
Right.
And I'm sure that if they should ever come back, I will get that text to wake me up at four o'clock in the morning, because frankly, they were working on.
Right.
And we're friends, and they have my private cell number, so.
Right.
So, but that's fine. That's, you know, I said, "Let me know when, and we'll get the police out there to try to, to let them know." We let the manager know, and as they let all the trucking companies know, "No, you can't go back there and idle a truck away."
Right.
For the steward.
Right.
So, so communication's important. You could be our quick person for the problem.
Okay, sure, great, I appreciate that.
Just, just general points, this goes along with everything. You know how I said before, it's like affordable housing punches through abrasive through or decision planning? When you make a settlement of the affordable housing case, especially here where you get a good settlement, let me get back on track, because one of the benefits of what the council did in 2015 versus council didn't opt in, or had builders develop remedy suits, there is no planning process, there's no word mix process, there's no plan. What happens in those towns is the court, the court approves site plan. The court has, God bless the court, but they certainly don't have a legal interest in it. So, by doing this whole process, it returns control, as much as you're out of control, it returns control to the enormous back to the town, whereby we then develop, we settle and develop ordinances that need to address these issues of landscaping, the lighting, reducing the impacts. Then, the whole planning process in a normal zone, in case you have, somebody has the properties on, they want to develop, have to go to the planning board to get a focus. But you also have that whole other layer of municipal review that you wouldn't have in case it wasn't settled, or there was a stray out of the remedy suits of that. The other side, too, is once you resolve it, it goes back to normal, goes back to normal local planning, and the planning board, and those types of things. I think Mika, from this particular site, do have some of those additional profit issues in the word mix.
Yeah. What we've asked is, we are actually working on creating, we've asked them, what your properties will be, will be the rear yard of this property, the Atlantic Delta. So, what we'll align to will be the rear yards. We've asked them to keep at least seventy-five foot setback from their rear property. In addition, we've asked them to provide at least twenty-five to thirty foot buffer that would be required of Evergreens or, you know, what have you, so that that's maintained throughout the year, so there is enough comfort for the existing properties to live. In addition, we've asked along the front, like, one hundred, to have additional landscaping around there. So, there are certain requirements. We've asked them to provide at least twenty percent of their site with open space. We've asked them to not group the buildings more than, you know, eight, eight to ten units per building. There should be enough space in between the buildings, so it doesn't look one big massive structure together. And we've asked them to create, you know, pathways around the building, and to try and mitigate the height of the building is what we ultimately need. There should not be more than three stories, you know, these kind of features we've asked them to do.
Right, right, that makes sense. And I just wanted to support that. And I just wanted to support that notion that, you know, all of this building and we want to, you know, limit the density and the traffic as we keep talking about. I just have one more question. You had said that the properties are private properties and they're sold and you have no control over that. But then Mr. Burrell, you said that you, that the council had to look for properties for this development. So my question there, that those, those kind of ideas are a little bit conflicting with each other and it seems as though all of this building is happening around us. So if you live on this side of Route 130, you know, over by Forest Hills or along Chester, all of this development is happening. And so my question to you is, why does it seem to be centralized to this side of Route 130 versus looking at other spaces?
Well, well, it's, it's, you're half right because half's on this side and half's on that side. We didn't look at it on what side of the highway was. Brace of alloy is just on the other side.
Right, I see, I see that, yeah.
And that way is on the other side of the highway toward the Delray land.
Right.
So what we were referring to was that we were looking for a site for a hundred percent affordable. Those are not sites, again, typically, that's not, developers are there to build houses and make money. Affordable housing is not something where they make a big profit on, if any, from what they tell me. And, and this was a site that we said, look, if we can find an affordable housing development, then, and we have a property that we own, then we can make this happen. Again, with, with a gun to your head, as you're negotiating with, with all the interviewers and the, and the special master staring at you, you're trying to find a way to come up with a solution. It was, it was literally weeks and every session was four hours and these, these attorneys on both sides of the, and one soon to be, these attorneys do this for a living. So they were, they were all about my client this, my client that, and, and we were trying to hold the line as best we could. Because I knew that at some point, we were going to all be sitting here. You know, not, not everybody, certainly a council agree, but not everybody who was, who was in politics and government said, yeah, that's a great idea, have one of those meetings where people come and just yell at you. You guys have been great. The conversations have been thought provoking, certainly from our side, I'm making, I'm making pages of notes on what we're doing, but everybody, everybody had great ideas. It wasn't just, it wasn't just, we don't want any homes.
And you did a wonderful job explaining that. I just want to make sure that, that the community wants more open space and, and we know how bad the traffic is. I know how bad the noise is. I mean, in my backyard, it's horrific, the traffic for Route 130 from Home Depot. I mean, it's just, it's not relaxing. And so we want to make sure that our community's best interests are being looked out for in terms of, you know, finding open space, spaces where, you know, those woods next to Home Depot are going to be built on. Well, I know there was two more properties headed down towards the Walgreens area, correct? That now are they going to be built on? I mean, so we just have those concerns in mind.
This, this is, you're talking about where Aldi was motivated, is that where you took them? That was, that's-
Lidl.
That's, I'm sorry?
It was called a Lidl? Was it German?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's German, sorry, not in Aldi.
So, so that, oh, that's right. So that property was different from, from here, this is-
Right, they are different properties and they're owned by different people.
Right.
It's just sad to see like the woods constantly being taken down. I mean, we have amazing animals in this forest. There's fox, deer, turkey, I mean, just to see that open space dwindling is a concern for Delray residents.
So, so we are, we are doing whatever we can do and employing whatever methods are available to try to, to try to minimize the destruction of open property. Can't talk about what we're talking about yet. We're working with some folks that were, we're trying to acquire their property and try to preserve what we can preserve. You know, this, this is, the folks that have been here a long, long time, it's a whole different town from what it was all those years ago, but that's kind of the nature of what happened. We'll continue to do, this, this takes, this takes a lot of time to try to do this with those folks and, and frankly, you know, you don't always get what you want, but you try to get the best that you can.
Right, and thank you, I appreciate it.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Did I go, take you out of overtime here? I don't, I didn't see anybody else's hands, so I'm only you.
And as to Fire Department, I believe you said it was possible that we would be getting an update on Stowag and what they're done with temporary holding it because of the runoff and everything.
I'm gonna ask Jeff, he came in, he came in from PT. So Jeff, we were talking about, where are you? I'm not, I'm not used to being this far down, but, so we were talking about Delray land and the fact that they had an issue with runoff and that we had stopped the, the project temporarily. Do you have any update from anybody?
There was a meeting with the township engineer, the construction code official and the county from the Brown County Soil Conservation. They went through what they need to do in order to, one, they have to address the issue they've created, they've stopped them. The common thing is that they were supposed to-
Get your stuff a little bit.
But I'm sorry, but not-
We didn't hear that at all.
Okay, try that again, Jeff, as loud as you can.
There was a meeting with the construction code official, the engineer and a member of the Brown County Soil Conservation earlier last week after the issue that took place. They went over with them exactly what the developer has to do in terms of, one, stop them, two, in order to address the issue of putting soil erosion fences and things up before they move forward. That's basically where it's standing.
So it's still at this point stopped until they, they-
That was the last thing I heard, yes.
Okay. So we're, we're, obviously we're on top of that. I can't really comment as to how that happened in the first place, but I, I think that, that the steps that they were supposed to take were taken.
And if this is part of what overall is going on with housing, behind the proposed 711, is that not to be housing as well?
Behind the 711?
Yeah, behind the 711, where like where the bill's trucking is, is that not slated to be more residential as well?
I think, yeah, I saw there was a sign for sale. We have any, we don't, we don't have anything. Official?
No.
No, no, we haven't had anybody say, hey, we want to put, stop.
So there's no scheduled units to be built?
No, that is, that at this point is a, is a lot for sale.
Only what you mentioned, the four major projects.
Right, that's right. And, and that will, that will protect us from another one of these for, for round three. And how long's that protection go? To 2025, correct? Right now? And, you know, we're gonna try to do everything we can between now and then to try to help protect.
Sure.
Thanks very much, appreciate it, Ben. Yes, sir.
Hi, yeah, Edgar Rogers, 4711 Road. I'd like to talk a little further about the Stowag.
Okay.
If you could expand a little bit, when apparently it was being, I know we stopped. Were there approved permits in place?
My understanding is that they were permitted to take down trees.
Okay, what I was told when it happened was they had two permits, just to take down the two buildings, nothing else. I've been trying to get a straight answer for a week and a half, that's why I'm asking the question.
Sure.
Here we are, we're talking about four properties that are going to get developed in the town. This is the first one. So far for us, it's been a disaster. Now, when they put a plan in place, engineer, is that correct?
I have a planner.
Oh, engine.
So, engine-
Is there an ENS plan? Was that submitted? The environmental and soil plan, was that submitted? Was that approved? Was there an onsite meeting with the construction official before it started?
Those are part of the planning requirements, I mean, the site plans, I'm sure they didn't happen. I wasn't bust out to be pretty pleasant, but I'm sure.
Because the first thing you have to do is put erosion control in place.
Yes, yes.
That went on, we, we came up to the township on June 20th and complained after the June 19th rain. Well, two of the busiest roads in the town, correct? Bridgeboro Hart, the mud is running down Hartford Road, my wife brought pictures on and complained. Nothing was done. You said you looked at Facebook. My wife put those pictures on Facebook. Nothing was done.
Right.
I don't, I have no comfort level right now, that's my issue.
I understand.
None whatsoever. You said there was a, you're talking about you're negotiating a seventy-five foot buffer for that one building. We're getting a twenty-five foot buffer and then there'll be buildings. No seventy-five foot buffer was negotiated there, nothing, no consideration for the six homes to sit there. So I wouldn't feel comfortable if I was that lady, when you're telling her there's going to be a seventy-five foot buffer. It certainly didn't happen in Stowag. That's all I've got to say. If you could answer any of this, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Are permits in place? Was there a medium onsite gone, which is supposed to be gone? I've done the same type of development in Pennsylvania for the company of our firm. Understand how the processes are. I don't think anything was filed correctly. If not, are they being fined?
Mr. Projector? Yeah, can you, can you give me your phone number? I'll get back to you with the information.
So, so for the folks that haven't, Jeff is our township administrator, Eton is the CEO that runs things day to day. So if you give him privately your phone number, Jeff is the person-
609-665-1407, that's my cell number. If I can get yours, I can text you at three o'clock in the morning.
I'll get you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Can I ask you another question? I'm sorry.
Sure, you have to come up. I'll fill my cell number.
Regardless of-
No, I'm kidding, I'm sorry.
So with regards to affordable housing, some of this is going to be rent property, correct? Is that controlled for a certain period of time? Will, will it always be affordable housing?
Yeah, what's the, what's the legal?
Thirty years.
Thirty years, okay. So even if that property's sold to another company that manages that, things like that?
It would be de-restricted.
Okay.
But the income qualifications that the township present rent to you, they're going up every year, so.
A few days, but at least a couple of weeks. Okay. Now, Hunter's Blight was not falling under any, because of the vote by, I guess, the Act?
A lot of other units have the prescriptions.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So anyone else has a question? Yes, sir.
I don't understand this, but I have a question about the Chester Avenue Development, I'm sorry, Mark Simeansky, AT First D Drive. Chester Avenue Development, is that going to be like a, a apartment building?
They have the options of, um, noises and problems.
They don't know what they're doing yet?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, is, no dates set then, how long?
They haven't, they haven't submitted a plan yet.
What, ballpark figure?
They haven't even owned the property.
Oh, they haven't owned the property yet?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
So again, I, I would, I would thank you. This has been the, the toughest question, but the most well thought out question. And frankly, you know, we, we've got some information, we're going to run down some things. You all have, conversation is here all the time. I don't know, Stuart, you represent some towns, I don't know how other towns handle this, but we certainly, we certainly wanted to be as out, upfront and as transparent with this now that we are able to talk about it. Obviously while the negotiating was happening, we couldn't do that, but that was the purpose we set all along, we would do this, have this meeting and have it available and streamed for those folks that could make it and will be recorded and available on the site as soon as maybe tomorrow. And if anybody has further questions, please reach out to us. Stuart, anything else to add?
The other thing I would say is that this is actually a case of first impression. Most towns don't do this, they wait till the planning board, you have to ask for the public to get the information. So, most towns shy away from this kind of town hall meeting to discuss generally affordable housing. This is actually, as I say, well, a case of first impression for me that I represent different parts, ten different towns to a co, so this is, this is new and actually is, I think is a positive, positive meeting.
I want to thank everybody. No one else has any questions? Oh, we do.
Welcome.
Hi, Mike Edgar Rogers, 410 Bridgeboro Road. From what I understand, the Stowag development originally was a fifty-five in order of a starting number of single homes. Then the Mount Laurel thing got stepped, they got sued, that's why they had to put up the affordable housing. Has those new plans with the affordable housing been approved yet?
I'm sure it's got approved from the local board, yes.
Uh, they have been approved, so there'll be no meetings on that development, so, okay, we'll be able to get the CHOs plans. I have a picture, partial picture of a plan with affordable housing that we got.
Those plans are available for public inspection.
Okay, but the ones that I saw last week, that's it? There'll be no more changes to those?
There are good plans, the planning board approved that would be, unless they try to amend their plan. That's, they're always trying to develop and build a property, that's why they ran into trouble by not having proper supervision, but they were clearly signed. So they've already been through their approval process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There was, there was someone else here that had asked, that hadn't had their hand up before. Still? Come on up.
Justin Joyce, 114 Kathleen Ave. We just purchased our property in Delray last year. Really excited to move here. I fear that with these developments being approved, unfortunately, the quality of life is going to go down significantly. I have four kids in the school district right now. I've spoken to people, they're concerned. I've heard no answers tonight as to how you guys are going to solve the problems that are going to come with these new developments. When will you have answers? What are we going to do about the schools? What are we going to do about the traffic?
So, just a couple of things. First of all, the school board is going to do with the schools. There's going to be increased revenue and we're going to work with them and try to, so it's not, frankly, that's not our jurisdiction. I understand the question, I agree with the question, but we have to work together to try to get to that.
Okay, and here's the other thing. I'm in my twenties. I'm working a job right now where I'm not making enough to pay what my taxes are going to go up by. I know you're saying you don't know how much or if at all. We all know what direction taxes move in. You don't have any idea yet as to what's going to happen? I mean, to me, that just sounds like poor planning.
It's not that we don't have any idea what's going to happen. We don't know yet what the tax revenue coming in is going to be, what its costs are going to be, what impact it will have to the school. There's going to be Stowag taxes that come in that are, that are proportioned to the school are going to be a bonus. The others are not going to be, as, as you're, you may or may not be aware. So what happens is, is we all pay, our portion of our taxes goes to the school. A portion that goes to the township is twenty percent of that.
I understand that.
Twenty percent of the total taxes, not twenty percent of the school's taxes. And, and that gets divvied up and they, they handle their part of it and we handle our part of it. All we could do was to try to mitigate the impact it would have and the best way we could do that would, would be with homes that were senior housing.
All right, well-
The last two developments, one that's been built, Timber Ridge, over by the Morse Town border and Stowag are all senior housing. Children in the school, what the school will still get when they, when they're, you know, when they're fully taxed, they'll get their full portion of what it is that they're supposed to get.
When will they be fully taxed? Because I've already asked the people at the desk down there, when I went to pay my sewer bill, what's going to happen with taxes this year? And they said they're anticipating them going up. Now, I already paid $10,000. I could go to any other state in this country and my taxes would be half of that. That is shameful on the part of New Jersey. And I understand the affordable housing issue is an issue that is best discussed in Trenton because that's where the problem originates with this garbage. However, as a taxpayer, I'm extremely disappointed. However, as a taxpayer, I'm extremely disappointed that the township is allowing this to happen, that Trenton is allowing this to happen to Delran. That's all I got to say. I mean, I really don't have a question other than why wasn't the plan better? Why don't you know what's going to happen with the schools? Why don't you know what's going to happen with the traffic yet? You said you're not steering the ship, or the township's not steering the ship on this issue, who is?
Well, for, for this, it was the courts. And, and we had to negotiate some of the parameters that were brought to us. And we, our, our part of that was to try to mitigate the numbers, get them as low as we could. And we, we did what we, what was possible to do. Now we're at the step where the planning part kicks in. You know, none, none of these, other than Stella Weg, which has been years and years and years in the making. They're ready, they're ready to go now.
The others are years out.
The others are years out. So, so we're looking at that as we're looking at that. Frankly, the school is going to have to adjust their plan. You've heard Amy, who, while she's a private citizen, we're all 24/7, even though we're part-time, we're all 24/7 what we are. So she's indicated that they're already meeting with folks to try to adjust as they have to adjust. It's not, we wanted to, we didn't want to bring any of this house in here. We were sued in order to do that.
And I understand that, that the state has you guys in a, in a headlock essentially. And like I said, the affordable housing issue is something that is best fought in Trenton. The legislature needs to get up and actually do something about it. I understand that. My issue is that you not knowing what the impact is going to be yet on taxes, traffic, schools, emergency services, public works, other than we're going to need more. How much more?
Well, it's, you know, you can't know.
Until it smashes in, until, until there's plans to look.
They haven't, you know, they don't, they don't own the properties yet in some cases. They haven't submitted a plan to the planning board. That process takes months and months and months and months. And then, once they're done, then they start to have the meetings for pre-construction. So most of this is going to be years down the road. In the meantime, as we gather more information, I suggest that you come to some of our planning, or some of our work sessions.
Oh, I plan on it.
Some of our work sessions. Or see them online, you can see them.
I do watch them online, I do plan on attending.
So, that's fine. So, so what we, we don't just go, yeah, all right, let's do that. Everything that we talk about, the five people that are, that are surrounding, the four people that are surrounding me, we spend hours and hours talking to one another and talking at those meetings about what options are available. We have the professionals that bring those, the options to us so that we can make the best decision possible. It's not always the decision that we want or you want. But we have, we're tasked to make the decision based on the available information. And we hire professionals to help us gather that information. I wish I could say, yeah, we'll stop all that, but we can't. So, you know, we have to be, we're the people that have the wonderful job of making the tough decisions. And not everybody's going to agree with us.
I understand that, dude. Politics sucks.
At times.
It's a really described that.
Interesting approach to it, but yeah.
But again, thank you for having this meeting tonight, letting people air their issues with this. I'm going to have my issues about quality of life, traffic, putting my kids in Delran schools that are already at capacity. So I just want you to understand where a lot of people in the township are coming from. We're not happy about this. We're not going to be happy about this. And that's really all I got to say, thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thank you, Jeff. This young lady and then this gentleman back here. That'd be you, ma'am? Yes, thank you.
My name is Carrie Smith, I live on Bridgeboro Road.
Terri?
By Bridge Alway. And you were talking about all these professionals that have done all these studies. Where's your traffic impact study? I want to know, where are your traffic impact studies for the home center planning I'm putting back there? There is no roads to handle 40, 50, 60 cars going in and out of there. Where are you going to put these people and their cars? We need to do a traffic impact study. Also, Hartford Road, I feel sorry for the people living down there. Who's done the traffic impact study there where they're going to put that 7-Eleven or Wawa, whatever it is that they're going to put there? And the traffic is going to be unbelievable. And you're talking about the houses over by the Home Depot. Are you planning on putting a traffic light up there? Because they already have accidents for cars coming out of Home Depot. What are you going to do with these people coming out of there? I want to see your traffic impact studies. Pardon me? It's fall.
Ma'am, ma'am, Sharon, you know the rules. Thank you very much.
I'll come up and speak.
Okay.
Okay.
Stuart, put us out here. Wait, no, 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 no.
Now, I'm just going to have to contact the tech staff.
Sharon, just a moment, please. This gentleman first.
So, as we discussed, now that everything comes back to us, each, each development that's listed up besides Stella Weg has an accident. As they go to the planning board, typically required is to get away, and I doubt with the comments and remake that they're going to get away. But they develop or have to submit a traffic impact study, a traffic study at the time of the planning board hearing to the planning board and the public. And the planning board professionals can review that study, see the impacts, see what can be done to mitigate the impacts from that.
Okay, apparently they don't do a very good job at it, or they don't live around to receive the traffic that there is in. All of you, I'm assuming, live in this area?
We all live in Delran. Not Mika or Stuart, but everyone else up here lives in Delran.
I'm sure everybody here has an issue with the traffic, it's.
I was just answering your question about where's the traffic.
The traffic impact studies, yeah.
That's what happened to the planning board, man.
Okay, so they have to submit it to you.
Correct.
And you approve it.
Well, they look at it, they review it, they may not agree with it, and they, they're going to have to put up proposals about traffic mitigation techniques, traffic lights, crosswalks.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
It acts as all these types of things. So it's kind of hard to speak about it hypothetically in the back room, but that's, that's why the planning board will look over all of these details when these applications come in.
Okay.
Let me answer one more of your questions. So there, there was a traffic study done for the 7-Eleven.
Okay.
We didn't like it. There were, there were three people that voted no in the planning board. One was right over there, Pat, and myself voted no, we thought it was a bad idea, but it passed by the majority of the members.
Obviously, I don't remember.
So, go ahead.
I said, obviously, I didn't remember.
They do, they, everyone, all the, all the volunteer, all the boards are made of residents of Delran or the only exception to that would be, I don't know, I don't remember, the class two. Class two would be an employee of the township, not an elected official, but an employee. And that person doesn't necessarily have to be a member of, resident of Delran, but works here. So, so was intimately involved with what goes on. So I get you. There, there are some safeguards that are involved, but it is, we don't always get what we want, even on, on the boards.
I do have one other question. Somebody was asking about the sidewalks for the children. Now, I don't know if you realize this enough, but the children that live on Bridgeboro have to walk to the high school. They walk, and there's an area by Loudon that has no sidewalk whatsoever, and it's in that curve. I'm surprised that nobody's gotten hit by a car yet. How come the township has not done anything about that? The sidewalks stopped at Creek Road. From Creek Road all the way down to the developments, there was no sidewalks for the children, and they have to walk to school.
So we have, I would say, the 10 of the last 11 years, we have submitted, tried to get grants for, for some sort of mitigation for that, to get those sidewalks done.
Is it going to take somebody getting hit by a car or to get?
I hope not.
Because it's very, very narrow path for those kids to walk on by Loudon.
Old Bridgeboro is, is county right now? Or is Jeff?
So this is an issue with the county?
So, so it is and it isn't. We can put the sidewalks in, but we, we would have to do that to their specifications. But we'll, we'll mention that to the county about that road, yeah.
It's very dangerous, right, over there by Loudon, where there's hardly room for a car to go by, let alone a child walking on the side of the road.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure enough. We do do this every month, by the way, if people come back. And the topics aren't restricted to one topic, it's open discussion. Yes, sir?
Thanks, Justin, again, I figured I could give you guys a breather on eight or six foot street. It's funny you mentioned that as soon as I was getting up, that how you have these every month. That was actually my question. I was actually just looking at the township website, and there's canceled, canceled planning meeting on the 11th, but nothing about a new one. I was just wondering, like, is there any way we can get more up to date on the event schedule? Or maybe like, put something on like the residents page, something like that? Because like, as a representative of my younger generation in town, and like I have a handful of friends that are buying homes, like the one gentleman that was speaking earlier, like, everyone wants to get involved, but half of us really don't know how. Like, the only reason I knew about this was because of the residents page.
Right.
And I've been looking up for like the last month and a half, ever since I've been interested in all of this, you know, stuff going on. And it's, it's hard to know when to show up, you know?
Right, so, so a couple of great points. First of all, we have the township has a web, has a Facebook page as well as a website. I'd suggest go look.
Not the residents, right?
Not the Delran residents.
It's a separate township.
Someone else runs that.
Okay.
Ours doesn't have all the, all the cool comments.
Yeah.
And address. So ours is kind of more one-way.
Yes.
It's a lot of information. Their, their planning board meetings are every Thursday, first, I'm sorry, first Thursday of every month.
Okay.
Unless there's no application.
I, I saw that on the 11th, right?
So the 11th was, you're talking about for August, the August one is back on.
Well, it was, it was for July, the one I saw was July.
July.
It was the 7-Eleven, right?
Right. So the August, I believe, is back on because there's, there's an issue that, that the board has to take action on.
Okay.
So that'll be back on, it'll be a short one. Typically, what will happen though at those meetings is that, that, that an applicant will bring all their professionals. They'll give us an opportunity to testify to all the things they're doing. We'll have an engineer and a planner that will, that are professionals do this. They'll review those plans and they make, we make determinations as to whether the plan, the application is complete. And, and that'll be based on if they have every, all the checks checked. And if they don't have all the checks checked, if because of mitigating circumstances, it's one that they wouldn't need to do that. Something that's required but is not on that particular site, then they'll ask for a waiver, there'll sometimes be granted. If it's deemed complete, then, then they'll do all their testimony. The board has the opportunity to ask any questions, and it's open to the public. The public has the opportunity to ask any questions. And then the board will, will decide whether they will give preliminary approval. And that'll kind of get the ball rolling from the developer's side or from the person who's doing whatever they're doing. Or final approval, or sometimes if it's a smaller project, preliminary and final approval. Typically, it's, it's deemed complete, preliminary, and final. Or that's for planning. Zoning has a different process a little bit, but they're typically not the big plans like that, although sometimes they are. They're more resident oriented. And council has this kind of a meeting, the first Tuesday of every month, right here in this room.
So first Tuesday, first Thursday, as long as there's applications.
So it's a busy week for, for us. But in that room, we, and you just come around the side hallway, come right down, that we're there the second, typically the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday. Sometimes in the summer, the schedules change and around the winter holidays. But we'll be here tomorrow night in that room. It's smaller, more intimate. If all these people showed up every time, we'd be in this room every time. But it's a small table, we have our meeting, we discuss everything we discuss, everybody's there, can listen to everything except for what is an executive session. That's typically for personnel issues, for litigation, anything else that I'm missing that would be.
Negotiations.
Negotiation. So, and then there'll be an opportunity for the public to make comment or have a question or concern.
So the best schedule, the best like way to look at the schedule for all this stuff is?
Oh, it should be on the township calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, right on our web, DelranTownship.org. You're welcome to come to these. And guess what? All the meetings and all the improvements are on the website. And, and that little red light over there is the camera. It's at a new angle tonight so we can get the screen, but it's typically over there. And Chuck has his own backup version, he does his own recording. So it's all there, it's available anytime, just go to the website, look at the meetings page. And then you'll see agendas and minutes and video.
Okay, cool, cool. Yeah, because there's so many, so many people at my age, and like, like I said, that, that no one really knows how to get about these things. But I promise we'll, you know, leave the torches and pitchforks a couple.
But we haven't figured, thank you. We haven't figured out, Tyler's in charge of figuring out what. Tyler is our youngest council person, but certainly doing a great job for us, we're happy about it.
Thank you, guys.
So, thank you. There was a gentleman in the back, or no, no, it was you, I saw the hand, I didn't, I saw his hand and your hand. Arlenia.
I'm a 12, six, Toby Moss. I have a question on the Delran land abatement.
Yeah.
Year one, when does year one start after the whole development's done or is as each house is sold?
So, so, so when, when the house is sold and the certificate of occupancy is granted, is issued, that's when the clock starts for that piece. So there's going to be, you know, some.
A bunch of year ones, every house, so it's not the whole development done, sold?
No, 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 no. So, so what will happen is, as each one's sold, other than the affordable, they're at 100% on certificate of occupancy. As each of those is sold, that's when that clock starts for that property. And then the next one might be the next day or the next weekend.
That's terrible. I was under the impression the whole development had to be done.
It's a ladder process, it's a ladder, so there's basically 91 little, little phases.
And, and the land, the tax on the land is not abated at all.
Right, right. What happens if these other projects don't happen? Because it doesn't sound like they're definitely, definitely.
In the, so from the intervenors? From Atlanta, Chester Avenue?
Yeah, like Chester Avenue.
Right, that's right. So, so if that should happen, then we would be tasked to find some other way to satisfy our requirement for affordable housing. What that means exactly is, is unknown. We would have to find, I'm sure there would be some other intervenor that would love to jump in and build more, but we would, we would do what we did. I mean, is anybody, Mika, there's, we have.
Is there any timeframe for any of these other developments?
I would just say to highlight what the council president said. We have a plan that the court has already determined to be a fair, reasonable plan. And we have to go September for compliance for metal or the IBS and the rest of these. Once that's done, we're good until 2025. Plan for it, we're good until 2025.
So if these all.
Let me start with the second. So that really is, we plan for it, we put up a plan. If they don't come to fruition after 2025, when they get to this fourth round, by the way, it took 16 years to get to the third round, actually more. So by the time they get around to the fourth round and figure out that maybe some of these plans didn't happen, they have to. I'm probably not going to, unless there's some legislative difference, the legislature comes to the aid of municipalities or governments or office executive branch, you might not get a fourth round until year 2035. So nobody really knows at this point. But what we do know is because of the settlement, because of the court approval, this town is going to be immune from these builders' remedies lawsuits through 2025.
As long as they get done, these.
Even if they don't get built, we've planned for it, they've approved our plan. What happens after 2025, when they're not built, we don't have the units to show, that's another story.
So we'll be back here again, yes?
Not necessarily. As long as we keep planning for it, we'll be okay.
So, let's say other developments come in besides these other four. Do they have to account for any of the, what do you call these terms?
They pay a fee in lieu of, they pay affordable housing, we've all to fee, whether they're commercial or residential. If they don't provide for affordable housing, which we probably won't, they pay a fee that goes into our trust to help us fund some of the other techniques to buy down existing. goes into our trust and to help us fund some of the other techniques to buy down existing and so we don't have to generate new affordable...
Because I noticed there's, like, 10 acres here and 15 there, and there's, you know, a few lots all around town that seem to be popping up for sale all of a sudden. So, they don't have to do any of this special stuff?
They have to, as Mr. Plant was just saying, they have to either accommodate affordable units within there or provide monetary compensation that we put into a COA, it used to be a COA, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so that we can help, you know, we use that to buy some of the houses that are empty and zombied or vacant or closed, that we can buy them and lower the selling price, and that becomes an affordable unit.
So, do the houses on Pear, is it Pear and Peachtree, those new houses, did they have to buy into this program?
I believe they did. They were part of the Mariucci. Jeff, do you have any input on the Mariucci? Wasn't that Mariucci?
They pay their COA fee.
They paid it.
There wasn't a number set at the time.
Do you remember? Because I'm just wondering how much they...
How much that was?
How much that was? And if you go back to those houses, there's a nice big tree setback from the back of their houses and with, like, fences that you can't, they can't touch these trees and things like that in that development. I don't know if that remains from it back there or what back there.
Meaning?
Could we write it in for the future so, like, what's happening with Stellwag doesn't happen with these other developments or setback that they can't touch a certain amount of trees?
Well, I think they were, they came, didn't they come in per plan? They didn't come in...
They didn't get any relief. They built according to the zoning.
They built according to the zoning, this was not the result of a lawsuit. This was, we have this property, what are the rules? Here they are, and they abide by them.
Can we do something for the future for one of these other housing developments?
We have a lot of landscaping controls, lighting controls, offer requirements, setback parts already in all our residential and commercial zoning.
So, how did this one get by?
Which one?
The one that's causing all the flooding, Stellwag's, all the trees got taken down?
They didn't comply with... So, they're...
Do they, are they going to have to put trees back in that they took out, maybe? Make a buffer?
They're going to have to buy by law.
If they cleared the trees that were supposed to be buffered, then they're going to have to replace them. Because obviously, there's parts of development, they clear the trees when they build a house, right? So, they had a number of other issues. They didn't have soil erosion control measures replaced before the survey was cleared.
They just bought a house right there.
That's not how that's supposed to work.
Okay. My other question is, you're talking about the over 55 housing development. Now, according to what I was reading, at least one person that's living in the house has to be over 55. And the whole development as a whole has to be 80% occupied. There's a lot of grandparents that are getting control of grandchildren now. So, that would be legal in these 55 and over houses. Why are you saying that?
Because no one under 18 is permitted to live there.
Okay, that has to be on the homeowners association on the deed. Are we trying to protect that? That's up to the...
That's deed restricted as far as somewhere.
Well, according to this, it's...
What's this?
Hopoff, I'm reading on a website, it's HUPA rules and with HUDLs.
Whose website?
There's quite a few websites, with the Fair Housing Act and with HUD and...
No, this is, what you're reading with Cheryl, I, specifically, this is age 55 and older restricted development.
Okay. Is it going to be, because usually, I know some people who live in some 85, 55 and older different developments, just one person has to be in and a few have...
I wasn't here for that, but what I'm hearing from the Council President, it's age 55 and older.
And no one under 18. So, if you have a 35-year-old child or a 19-year-old child...
That's okay.
That, they can live with you.
And if you're grandparent, 55 and older and have custody of your grandchild, that is not going to be allowed.
You can't live there.
And that's going to be on their deed restricted with the homeowners association. And because I guess every two years they have to do a count to see how many people are over. I guess I have to read this better.
I don't know what that's referring to.
I'll read this better and I'll print it out. Maybe I can try to rearrange my schedule and come tomorrow night.
Awesome.
Questions?
That's fun.
Do we have any guidelines on these other three developments? When they're going to, are they, like, done deals? Have they purchased the land yet?
No, but they're at various stages. We, frankly, we negotiated the deal.[1748.04]